You ready?
I know.
All right. I'd like to open the city council, regular city council meeting for September 24th. It is 7 o'clock PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, first item is roll call.
Mayor Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gerton. Councilmember Nutt.
Here.
Councilmember Romi.
Here.
Councilmember Dyer. Also in attendance, City Manager Coffey and City Attorney Bone.
Okay, we can move on to additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, and any, does anyone in council have any changes? Okay. We're done, we'll move along to presentations, proclamations, and introductions. We have a proclamation, and this is Constitution Week proclamation. I will go ahead and read that proclamation. All right, whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. And now therefore, we, the mayor and council members of the city of Indian Harbor Beach proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So do we have someone here that wishes to come up and speak?
Evening. Is that close enough? Good evening. Beth Dewey and I, Catherine Omen, bring greetings from the Rufus Fairbanks chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to the City Council of Indian Harbor Beach. Our chapter applauds the city of Indian Harbor Beach for its continued commemoration of Constitution Day, which is September 17th, by issuing a proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council of Indian Harbor Beach for doing this.
You. Yes, so come down.
I'm just the picture taken.
Oh, you're more than that, Beth.
Thank you very much. Wonderful to see you. Thank you so much.
All right, on to approval of minutes for the regular council meeting of September 8, 2025. Does anyone have any changes that they would like to see made? Hearing none, I will sign those into the record. Next is city reports, starting with city manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, city council members, residents gathered here and watching at home. Clarification, if anyone has visited the FDOT website recently, though, see a flyer that they have prominently posted saying that the South Patrick Project will be starting next week. We called to confirm that and were told, oops, we forgot to take that down. It's not starting until late November, mid-December. So I just wanted to put that clarification out in the community. Update on summer camp swim lessons, parent survey. In our continuing effort to get more feedback from residents, we conducted an email, electronic-based customer satisfaction survey. The results were overall very positive, although the sampling size was small. So we're hopeful next year with the communications manager, we can increase that response rate. The August Fire Department Instant Response Report is attached. Update on code enforcement. In an effort to increase transparency of our operations, I signed a proposal for an additional module to our Civic Plus platform that will better allow staff to manage their workload and provide visibility of cases in process. This will also integrate with our resident reporting system, C Click Fix, and MuniCode, which is our online source of the city charter and code of ordinances. The initial year's cost with implementation was $9,750, annual renewal of $54.38 plus an escalation clause. We believe we can absorb that in savings in the new year. Per the city charter, the revenue and expenditure report for the month of August is attached. Ninety-two percent of the year is through. General fund revenues of $11.6 million are 76% of the budget, and $10.4 million in expenditures are 68. Anyone here for the first time or watching, we had some grant budgets, which is why those percentages are lower than normal. The Stormwater Utility Report is substantially unchanged at 97% of revenues received and 52% of expenditures spent. The ARPA Fund is at 30% with just under $600,000. Doors and paddles boathouse door replacement. Due to the deteriorating condition of the four garage doors, staff solicited bids for this unbudgeted project. Yesterday, I signed the attached proposal for $19,880 to replace existing doors with 150 mile an hour rated doors. And the updated contingency tracker is attached. We did have one employee recognition this year. This month, it is a unique one. It's our beach parking staff, a vendor that we use, PCI. Assistant City Manager Covert received an email from a paid parking patron appreciating the excellent customer service by the general manager and the parking attendant on site. Lastly, tentative agenda items for the next meeting include the annual police vehicle piggyback purchase, Algonquin Sports Complex Pathway Award of Contract. Councilmember Nutt has requested speed bumps on North Osceola Drive be on the agenda, and code enforcement discussion of existing codes that we believe need to be tweaked. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is city attorney's report.
Just one matter, I still have not heard back from the Attorney General yet. So that's about all I can say, we'll just wait and see.
Okay. All right, next is council comments, starting with Deputy Mayor Gerton.
I just have a little trivia here, just while we're talking about sidewalks and streets and all that stuff. I just noticed that there was, I think, four telephone poles on the west side of South Patrick Drive. It doesn't seem to have any use at all, other than just standing up there. So while we try to make a little room on our sidewalks, I like to, you know, have the staff look at it and see who needs to take it down.
Okay. Councilmember Nutt?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Romi?
Nothing major, suffice to say, still working on the veteran statue in Gleason. Hopefully more to report next time, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Dyer?
I just want to let everybody know, I was recently notified that I was, I applied and was selected for the 2025, 2026 Florida League of Cities Advocacy Committee. What does that really entail? Just the opportunity to meet four times a year with other cities and then bring some of these local, smaller city issues up to the state level. And that way, it's just more of a voice. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity, and I will bring back whatever news I hear up there.
That's great, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I do not have any comments, let's go around. Okay, next is public comments on agenda items only. Just to inform the folks that might be here for item number 10, which is the Yuma Drive discussion, I will open that up to public comment when that item comes up. So we'll do the typical three minutes of speaking, but want to let you know, your voice is going to be heard. So this is probably not the time for you to do it, is right now, because it's going to be a while before we get to that item. So anybody else out in the audience wishes to speak on an agenda item, please come up, state your name and address. Being none, we don't have any unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. Item number four, public hearing, second reading of ordinance number 2025-05, fiscal year 26 millage rate. I'll read the ordinance into the record, ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance adopting a millage rate for the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Florida, for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, providing for severability and an effective date. City Manager Coffey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. State law requires two public hearings to adopt the millage rate and the budget. This night, we will do both second readings on those. The tentative millage rate is 5.5099, or 3.96% above the rollback revenue neutral rate of 5.3000. This will yield an additional $302,367 in net property taxes. I will quickly go through a presentation we have that I went through a little more detailed at the last meeting. This process publicly started in March of this year with multiple city council meetings and workshops. The preliminary valuation of the city, existing property increased under 3% for a total with new construction of just under $1.5 billion in valuation. This equates to a combined 3.99% increase in valuations. The proposed budget is presented balanced at $13.388 million, which is a million or 8.42% higher than the adopted budget. When one-time use of fund balance next year is removed and impact fees removed from this year's budget, the increase is actually $255,000 or 2.13%. The use of tax, the additional tax receipts is $206,050 is for employee pay increases and payroll taxes. $43,226 is for increased police pension contributions, and $147,713 is increased employee health insurance premiums. With the proposed millage rate of 5.5099, a homesteaded property owner will see a 2.87% increase in their tax bill. For example, someone with a taxable assessment of $530,000 would pay slightly over $81 in additional taxes this coming year. This chart I won't read in detail, but it gives an example of a median sale price in June was $540,000, and it breaks out the assessed valuations, the taxable valuations for schools, non-schools. And for a homesteaded property with an estimated value of $651,000, the IHB taxes would be $1,653 or a $49 increase, where that person's total tax bill is just under $5,000 when other agencies are included. This chart is one way of showing that Brevard Public Schools is almost 50% of the local tax bill, with Brevard County at 25%. The public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 26 millage rate tonight will conclude this year's budget process related to the tax rate. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to come up and speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. I did.
With no discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt on second reading ordinance number 2025-05, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year 2025-2026 at 5.5099%.
Second.
Motion, my councilman Dyer, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item number five, this is also a public hearing. This is second reading of ordinance number 2025-06, fiscal year 26 annual budget. I'll read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance to establish and adopt a budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026, providing for severability and an effective date. City Manager Coffey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Similar to the millage rate we just concluded, the budget requires two public hearings and two affirmative votes. The first public hearing was on September 8th, which was advertised in the trim notices mailed by the property appraisers. This public hearing was advertised in accordance with state statutes in Florida today. I will go back to the next presentation and quickly go through that also. The all funds, we have four major funds. It has a combined $13.8 million. The overwhelming majority of that is the general fund at $13.388 million. Expenditures are balanced, as required by state statute. The general fund, major revenue sources, if you like a lot of numbers on this chart, is 60-plus percent of property taxes and other recurring ones. I will quickly go through these charts, because we have some graphs that are easier to read. On the expenditure side, various departments had increases related to the aforementioned personnel costs. There were some reallocation of expenses among departments, is why you see some negative numbers there. The basis of this budget is continuing the city's debt-free status, the aforementioned tax rate, an $18 a year increase in the Stormwater Utility Assessment Fee that was approved last month, and $54,000 in new revenue from the non-resident paid beach parking program. Continuation of school board funding of the school resource officer, the shared victim advocate with, in the police department of Satellite Beach. 31% increase in employee health insurance premiums. If you're in the audience thinking that's a huge number, other cities had it worse. And 3% increase in liability property worker comp, largely due to growth in the value of our property and payroll. Additionally, all employees receive a 1% cost of living, a 3% step or progression raise that moves them through their pay grade. $20,000 is included to address the second of three years progress towards deficiencies identified in a 2023 salary survey that identified department directors' pay being under market and additional staffing. Florida retirement contributions remained largely the same. There was a modest increase in police pension contributions and completion of the Algonquin Sports Complex expansion project and ancillary projects. This is the same chart as I spoke about previously. I included it in case someone looked at this part of the agenda and not the previous item. General fund revenues, as mentioned, is 3.4 million or 8.4% higher than the adopted budget, but only 2% when one-time use is taken out. I won't read the tax information, it's the same as I previously mentioned. This chart gives a visual visualization of our revenue sources in the general fund, showing property taxes at 64%. This is one of the reasons staff is paying close attention to the property tax reform debate in Tallahassee. And a lot of the other fees you see are flat or outside of our control of increasing. On the expenditure side, the police department is our largest department. These numbers are skewed, because we have a larger-than-normal capital outlay department this year. And if you don't like colorful pie charts, the dollar bill gives a better visualization of 50 cents out of every dollar goes to either the police department or capital projects to maintain our infrastructure. Changes in departments, expenditures, the fire, public safety, fire and police, capital outlay had the largest increases. And the building department decrease was the reallocation of the fire marshal position to the fire department, which also explains why the fire department had such a large increase. We have many capital projects for next year, the largest being the first half of the fire station annex project, road remilling, the first of three-year budgeted money to replace the ladder, the 75-foot ladder truck for the fire department, and many, many projects, I won't read them all. The Stormwater Utility Fund, it proposed budget of $414,000 is 24.49% higher than the adopted budget. This is largely a result of an increase in the assessment, as previously mentioned. Expenditures in the Stormwater Utility Fund include monies for general maintenance, the rain barrel waterfront buffer matching grant programs, capital improvements, and contingency to balance the budget and also fund the baffle box project that was budgeted originally in prior years. On the personnel side, as mentioned, 5.82 FTE increase. An FTE is a way of counting part-time people. Someone who works 20 hours a week is considered a .5 FTE. New positions include half a year of a new communications manager. The second half will be funded in the fiscal '27 budget. 3.82 FTEs for part-time fire maintenance specialist positions to help the volunteers focus on training. And response call, part-time recreation people to address not only the Algonquin expansion, but have eyes and hands on all our amenities seven days a week. Additionally, there were some positions last year that were partly funded. The police lieutenant position last year, we have a quarter of that funding to fully fund it and also fully funding a public works maintenance position. We did eliminate some positions in the rec department that were more focused on just opening and closing the gate at Algonquin. The public hearing and adoption of this budget will conclude a process that internally started last December. So staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. This is also a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to come up and speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
No, no discussion. I'd like to make a motion for ordinance number 2025-06, approving, adopting the fiscal year 2025-26 annual budget.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Councilmember Romy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number six, award of contract, police department boathouse replacement. This is to consider awarding a contract not to exceed $40,000 to Shoreline Marine Contractors LLC to rebuild the police department boathouse and authorizing staff to transfer the balance of the budget to the contingency. City Manager Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The FY '26 proposed budget contains money to rebuild what we commonly call the boathouse. It's a dock and structure that the police boat uses. Staff advertised this solicitation in accordance with the city charter. We received two bids. Shoreline Marine Contractors was the low bid. They have done, they have done work for us in exemplary manner before. Therefore, staff has no problem with the disparity in the two bids. As a note, this is a fiscal year '26 project, so if approved, I will not sign the proposal till next year, so we don't have any audit issues of which year this actually started. Staff recommends city council award a contract not to exceed $40,000 to Shoreline Marine Contractors to rebuild the police department boathouse and authorize staff to transfer the balance of the budget to contingency.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in council have any comments, questions? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to award a contract not to exceed $40,000 to Shoreline Marine Contractors LLC to rebuild the police department boathouse and authorize staff to transfer the balance of the budget to contingency.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Romy, second by Councilmember Nutt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number seven, termination of contract with BDI Marine Contractors LLC for construction services of the partially grant-funded city hall baffle box stormwater project. This is to consider terminating the contract with BDI Marine Contractors LLC for construction services related to the city hall baffle box stormwater project and provide direction to staff on how to proceed. City Manager Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Previously, the city had issued an RFQ for design, and once that was done, issued an RFP for construction services. During the RFP process, multiple prospective bidders identified questions in the construction plans, and there was a considerable delay in the design team answering all of those, and the addendum that ultimately was completed at the end of the advertisement process ended up being several hundred pages long with back-and-forth questions and answers. Three bids were received. The evaluation committee ranked them in accordance with the evaluation criteria, and BDI was the top-ranked firm. A contract was developed, and on August 12th, the city council awarded a contract to them. The, later in August, staff held a pre-construction kickoff meeting attended by the contractor and the design team and city staff. Shortly thereafter, BDI contacted me claiming that they did not see all the addendums, that they were only looking at the online advertisement source, and the RFP document clearly stated addendums would only be posted on our city's website. Therefore, they started to request a large change order, and I took the liberty of saying no to that, and on September 8th, they requested that the city cancel the project. Per the termination clause in the contract, there's no financial impact to the city as no work had commenced, and they requested the cancellation. Going forward, there's two options for the city council to select from. One is to negotiate a contract with the second-ranked firm, Universal Contracting and Construction, or two, reissue the request for a proposal. Therefore, staff recommends the city council count, terminate the contract without cause pursuant to the agreement with BDI on August 13th, 2025, and provide direction on how to proceed.
Okay, thank you. In the expansive document that you referenced for the addendum number one that was eventually issued, I presume all the information was there, but obviously, with a document of that size, it's probably a bit challenging to weed through. I'm not suggesting that BDI had any, any valid reason for not including that in their, in their contract. That's a little ridiculous for them to claim that. Normally, I would say that we would just go on to the second-ranked firm. However, in this case, I'm, I have a little concern about doing that, not because of the firm or the, the second and third-ranked firms, but of concern of there potentially being contract documents that might need a little more massaging, perhaps plan revisions to go on them as opposed to just being in an addendum form. I want to make sure we get this right. I don't want to end up with a project that ends up being problematic from change order standpoint. In this particular instance, I think I would be in favor of rebidding the project. So long as we're not in danger of losing any funding, timing-wise, then I, I would be in favor of rebidding the project.
And just for clarification, there is a clean set of construction plans, so if the council does want us to rebid it, I can get a new RFP out rather quickly with the clean construction plans and not have to reference all the addendums.
Okay. That's my opinion on it, but of course, council, anybody else on council have questions or comments on it?
I also agree. I think it should definitely be a new proposal because of the last six months, prices have changed drastically, so new proposal, new prices.
That was, one of my questions was, is it going to cost anything to cancel that contract? But obviously, we already addressed that, and two, would the second-ranked firm even, you know, have that same previously negotiated contract? So that's what I, but at this point, I would agree, it just makes sense just to rebid it out.
What's the timeline on the appropriations from the state? Is there, is, does it expire or no?
They have given us one extension already through, through mid-next year. I don't believe there'll be a problem, and plus, we have a second water quality grant that far exceeds the appropriations. So the funding source of it, we're, we're good.
How long did, alright, so if we did RFP, we're going to meet the, we'll meet the timeline, to stay within that. And what was the cost with Universal? As far as I see how they scored, but I'm looking at, I want to know what the cost that they proposed.
They were actually, I want to say, $10,000 to $15,000 less than BDI. The third bidder was extremely higher.
Yeah, so it was a qualifications and cost type of proposal. It wasn't just based on, it wasn't just.
I understand, it was a point system, yeah, I understand that. I just wanted to know before we put it out for RFP, and if we have the option to go with the second, it just makes sense to me to save us a little bit of time, and, but again, as time, as price has gone up, I don't want to hold them to it. I'm not gonna, Universal's got a whole, obviously, by this time, we went back to them, they're going to say, well, prices have changed, so we might as well go with a new RFP.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I think we should do this in two motions. First one, if, if the council is inclined to do so, is accept the termination of contract dated August 31st, 2025, as requested by BDI Marine Contractors LLC, and the second motion would be to rebid City Hall Baffle Box Stormwater Project.
Okay. All right, any more comments from council? I would entertain a motion, first motion.
I'd like to make a motion to terminate the contract without cause pursuant to the agreement executed by the city and BDI Marine Contractor LLC.
Mr. Mayor, may I revise that?
Yes.
Okay. Please, it would be a motion to accept the termination of contract dated August 31st, 2025, as requested by BDI Marine Contractors LLC.
I'd like to amend my motion with that, that language.
It was red.
Second.
Good move. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Dyer, second by Councilmember Nutt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, I would now entertain a motion, a second motion.
What else would you like?
Ah, motion to rebid City Hall Baffle Box Stormwater Project.
Okay, motion to, to execute City Hall Baffle Box Project.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gertin, second by Councilmember Romy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, item number eight, Fire Station Annex Project Procurement Method. This is to consider providing direction to staff regarding the city council's desired method of designing and building the fire station annex building. City Manager Coffee.
As previously mentioned, the fiscal year '26 budget contains 50% of the funding for the fire station annex project. Typically, public sector agencies use one of two procurement methods for vertical construction, what's commonly called design-build and design-bid-build. I've listed some of the features. One of the, the biggest differences is in design-build, you competitively select a contractor who then hires the engineer firm, and they work basically as a team, but you don't have a second bid when it comes time for the construction approval. On design-bid-build, which is what we did for the public works renovation area, and I believe what you did for the police department, you bid out the design work separately, and then when you get construction plans, you bid out the construction services separately. You do have potential for disagreements over how things should be done between the engineers and the contractors. In my opinion, it's a little slower process. Both are valid, but I wanted to get direction from, from y'all which one you prefer on this before I start getting something to hit the streets to get this project moving.
Okay, thank you. Would we have the capability under a design-build scenario to select the team or just the general contractor? Because there's more than just, it's not just an engineer, it's architecture, mechanical, electrical, structural, et cetera. And if we were to head in that direction, I would want to make sure that we're choosing the best, the most qualified team to do that and not just the contractor.
I'll defer to Carl, but what I was going to say, put the T on the wiffle ball on the T for him, is we can request in RFQ for them to identify who their design team members are.
And that was going to be my answer. You know, you, you make that part of the, the RFP RFQ.
I mean, I, I'm a bit partial to design-bid-build. It does take a little longer, but for the very reasons you, I think for some of the reasons you stated, but you're, you're able to separate the design professionals somewhat from the general contractor. And let's not say anything bad about either one, it's simply the design team does their design, GC comes in, there's no reason why they can't suggest some value engineering should they see items that they could save the city money or be done better, but it insulates the design team a bit, allows them to do their job in the way they're trained to do it, and then again, the general contractor can come in and, and they of course bid the project, and then you go from there. But it does, it will certainly take a little bit longer to do, to go that route, but I would be partial to going that route, design-bid-build. Remember Nutt?
Mayor, within your professional experience, can you tell me what the timeline difference would probably be, anticipation?
I honestly don't know that because we have, I mean, the last time we worked on a design-build project was probably 25 years, easily. It's been a long, long time. I don't see it that often. When I see it, it's usually, usually on larger-scale projects is where I see it. For instance, even on the Melbourne Police Department headquarters, that was a design-bid-build. You bid the project based upon designs that were provided by various consultants. So you can see it both ways. I know Melbourne City Hall was done, it was a design-bill. Others, you can go either route. I think it's a little cleaner overall, again, it's time, it takes a little more time.
John, what was your experience in the last few years that you mentioned here as far as the difference between the two?
I'll concur with, with the mayor, the vast majority of vertical construction I've been associated with in my career has been design-bid-build. We did use design-bil, design-build on the Millennium Beach Boardwalk rebuild, and that was started before I got here.
That's apples and oranges, what we're talking about here, so.
Yeah, our, our police station, our police station was a design-bid-build with a guaranteed maximum price is what we ended up doing with a contractor on that. And that got them involved in the process a little bit prior to issuance of the permits. They had some say, say, but they had some suggestions and value engineering they could do as part of the design process. I think there were some changes that were made, some adjustments that were made, but you can do that combination as well, so you can introduce them into the process a little sooner, and, and you can, you can shave off that extra time.
And I'm gonna, chief, yeah, I, I know we, it's been a while, it's been a minute, and getting this far has been great. I'd like to see this get done sooner, but I think you and the firemen deserve the best. So I think let's pay attention to the detail, and I'm going to agree with the mayor. Understood, so let's do it right.
All right. I go along with that, Scott. I mean, we've had success with it with the police department, and we'll see why we need to consider changing.
I think also in the name of transparency, I also like the design-bid-build with the competitive building. I can go with that.
I guess this would be for John, in, in the history of either of these, like, is there a significant cost difference? Obviously, I know you negotiate a set price, but typically, is one tend to come back with more changes to the initial contract and renegotiate terms, or is there just, is it no, no big difference with cost with these two plans?
If, somebody who's been. If, somebody who's been watching our meetings for a while, we had a lot of change orders with the Public Works renovation, because we were dealing with an old building renovations. Vertical construction is usually much cleaner once you get above the topsoil. There's always some question mark of the testing and subsurface, but vertical construction tends to have a lot less change orders than renovations to older buildings. So I don't think there's a substantive difference.
Then I would, I would tend to, you know, lean on the design-bid-build as well. That way, we can make sure that we're getting the best contractor for the job.
So, no further questions on council? You want this to be on motion consensus? All right. So it sounds like the consensus is design-bid-build. With the potential of looking at a guaranteed maximum price to bring a contractor in sometime during the design process to help facilitate, speed up the project a bit. All right. Item number nine, reappointment of City of Indian Harbor Beach Planning and Zoning Board Members. This is to consider reappointing Mr. Bruce Moya and Ms. Veronica Sullivanova to the Planning and Zoning Board as voting members, with the term expiring on September 30, 2028, and Ms. Linda Jimmian as an alternate member with term expiring September 30, 2026. City Manager Coffee.
The Planning and Zoning Board composition is governed in the Charter and the Code of Ordinances. The membership consists of six appointees by the city council, one by the school board. The school board member is a non-voting member. All three members are interested in being reappointed. Staff recommends their reappointment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Mayor Nutt, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Mr. Moya and Ms. Sullivanova as voting members for three-year terms expiring on September 30, 2028, and Ms. Jimmian as an alternate member for a one-year term expiring in September 30, 2026.
Motion by Councilmember Romi, second by Deputy Mayor Gert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number 10, Yuma Drive Sidewalk Capacity Improvement Project Review. This is to consider reviewing new information regarding the Yuma Sidewalk Capacity Improvement Project and give direction to staff. City Manager Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The FY '25 approved budget contained transportation impact fee funding for the two sidewalk capacity improvement projects. A word of contract was approved on March 25 for both projects. On September 8, based on resident request, the city council paused the Yuma project that was scheduled to start the next week, or that week, and asked for staff to determine cost of terminating the contract and obtain additional information. Mr. Scaldow and I met with the contractor subsequent to that and explained to him the situation we were in and request of information, talked about shifting to Osceola Drive project. His concern was getting geared up for another large project and being told to stop, so he requested a two-week guarantee that he could start that project. That's where the end of October tentative start date came into, because we'd have a meeting on October 14. He also suggested, if the council was still interested in doing the Yuma project, that if he started in the end of October in Osceola, he would finish in probably the March timeframe, and then he could do other clients' work and start Yuma on May 1 and do as much of the project as he can during the summer months when school's not in session. Notices were mailed out to the Osceola Drive adjacent property owners about the plan to move forward on that. The next week, per my request, the contractor submitted his termination cost claim to the city if the city council wishes to terminate the Yuma project. He believes he has approximately $6,000 in work conducted prior to the pausing of the project. And per the language in the contract for termination, which speaks of reasonable profit for the, for the work not completed, he submitted a price of $53,000 and change for a total of $59,000 to cancel the project. Of note, $178,000 for the Yuma project is the city's impact fee money that Brevard County holds in escrow for us. If the city council terminates this project, we have to return that money to Brevard County and use general fund money for the termination fee. If the city council modifies the project to reduce the cost, we have to return the unspent portion of the $178,000. Impact fees, as most on the city council understand, can only be used for transportation capacity improvement projects. Since we're a built-out city and are not in the building new roads business, new sidewalks or increased capacity of sidewalks is one of the few items we can use our impact money for. Therefore, I've listed three options. They're not exhaustive, but the three most likely options is to proceed originally planned Yuma Sidewalk first, proceed with Osceola Drive project, then do Yuma, or third, cancel the Yuma project and pay the contractor his requested amount and return the TIF money to Brevard County. Staff recommend, request direction.
Okay. Thank you. As promised, I will open this up to public comment. I do want to say that last time I let the conversation continue past the public comment phase of it, and I allowed people to ask questions from the, actually from the audience as opposed to being up here during their three minutes. I'm not going to do that tonight, so you get your three minutes. Council will discuss the project and the options, and then we're going to make a decision at that point. So please, once you've had your three minutes and you've sat down, no questions from the audience, no comments from the audience. With that being said, when I call your name, please come up, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first person is Jeremy Weiss.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Weiss. I reside at 315 Yuma Drive. I first just want to start by thanking the council for your time and your efforts. I understand the inconvenience of putting in the request to pause. I think myself and all those on Yuma Drive appreciate the council making that decision to at least hear out the debate a little bit further. I think you all have read my emails. I don't really want to belabor this anymore. At the end of the day, I just, and I think even Mr. Coffee just said it, there's three options that were presented. Those aren't the most exhausted list of options. I would encourage the council to consider potentially an option four, fifth, and sixth, maybe a modification to the current proposal on Yuma Drive, maybe use that funding for a different street in our neighborhood. Ultimately, I feel those options are way too narrow, and there's other ones that the council should explore at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Ken Bowman.
I'm Ken Bowman. I actually don't live on Yuma. I'm at 918 Blue Water, so I'm on the opposite side. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns, revisit this. Listening to the voters is one of the most important things that you can do, so thank you. With that said, you're here to represent all of the voters, not just voters on Yuma. Yuma consists, where the sidewalk is, there's about 17 houses. Of those 17 houses, about eight of them are on that one side of the road. One of those houses is up for sale, several of those other ones are rentals. The challenge with our small town is keeping it a small town, but continuing to make improvements, improvements in safety, improvements in public works, et cetera. Everybody wants safety, or says they do, but we stop short when it affects us personally. When the safety affects our children, it should be a no-brainer. It should never be a decision that requires a lot of thought, only action. When I first started this project, I was just like everybody else. Why would they do it at this time of the year? This makes no sense. We have all this traffic, blah, blah, blah. After hearing the police chief speak, after hearing council speak, I believe that it's well-thought-out and that it is, it is thought-out. One way with the police enforcing rules, et cetera. We do need to put safety above all. There are four accidents that I know of in the last month, month and a half, of bicycle riders crashing. I've seen one of them personally myself. This project is for the greater good of the whole community. I do apologize to anybody on Yuma. I understand where this is coming from. I would be upset too if it was my yard, but for greater good is for the safety. Right now, the sidewalk is too skinny for bikes to pass each other. The road is windy. The bike lane is full of water from the irrigation. We have construction vehicles. We have landscaper vehicles that park in the, in the bike lane. Widening the sidewalk, I think, would help alleviate that. So I know I'm the devil's advocate, but I'm actually on the opposite side of that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Caitlin Bowman.
I'm Caitlin Bowman, 918 Blue Water Drive. I first quickly want to thank the city and the council for keeping this discussion going over these last several weeks, as late in the game as it feels like it is or that it is. But I hope it shows all of the residents here in Indian Harbor Beach just how important their opinions and their voices really are to the betterment of our town, which is something we all benefit from. Just as my husband said, when we first heard about this sidewalk widening project on Yuma, like everybody else, we were confused and thought the timing was terrible. And really, it felt unnecessary. But again, I, you know, I hear where all of our neighbors that live on Yuma are coming from, and I hear their frustration and confusion. Again, we would feel the same way if it were our road, and I don't at all discredit that. But again, I think when things like this come about, with any questioning, with any confusion, it should really just prompt your own curiosity in seeking those answers before we jump to conclusions or jump to a resolution. You know, we need to have that discussion. And it did prompt my own curiosity to seek the answers to those questions. Why is it happening now? Why is this even necessary? And what will they do to ensure the safety of our children that are going to and from Ocean Breeze during that construction period, which is something that directly affects me and my family, as I bike with my daughter to and from school every day, and I go down Yuma to get there? But over the last several meetings, all of the answers to my questions have been addressed, and all of my concerns have been eased. I appreciate the city and the council and the Police Department's collaborative efforts in creating and communicating their safety plan for the students and the residents during the construction period. But I am painfully aware that this is still an inconvenience for many, and again, I don't at all discredit that. But I think we can all tolerate a temporary inconvenience when we're discussing improvements and updates within our community and increasing the safety for its residents. And over the last several weeks, I personally witnessed four separate bike accidents, all on Yuma Drive. Three involving children and actually one involving an adult, but their bikes going to and from the school, just simply because there's not enough shared space. Adults and children alike are constantly dodging each other to get out of the way of the other person. They're going on and off the sidewalks and in and out of the bike lanes and the roadways, and that is undoubtedly when these accidents happen. There just simply isn't enough space, as it stands, to maneuver safely, not to mention the pulling of the water that's just seems to always be there for whatever reason. But again, I don't ignore or belittle the inconvenience that this would cause for people, especially for the folks that live on this road. I hear that. But again, there's a greater safety issue at hand, and we actually have the opportunity to improve it, and I think that we should do that. But lastly, I just implore the residents of Indian Harbor Beach that we must work in tandem with the city and the council and not against you all. Working together is the only way that solutions can be made, and we can find common ground. Your job is to look out for us and our best interest and our safety and the betterment, again, of our town. And you're only looking for ways to improve it and make it better. But sometimes that does require sacrifices from its residents. But regardless, our best interest is always at the forefront for all of you, and I know that we appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi. My name is Jack Williams. I live at 305 Yuma Drive. Basically, I heard from, saw via various emails and that sort of stuff that I've received that there was no study done of the actual traffic and the situation on Yuma Drive that necessitated this renovation of widening the sidewalk. So I did my own study. I used a Ring camera, videotaped it from our garage to monitor the traffic today. And per my reviewing of the video, which I have, I can give it to the council, and I don't know how to get it off my phone easily to give it to you. But basically, you had 47 bikes going down to school in the morning. So that's, and over this period, I went basically a half an hour before school. So that was 1.5 bikes per minute going down Yuma Drive. The number of persons, I counted 14 people going in the direction of the school, so that's .47 people per minute. And the number of cars, I had 44 cars, so that's 1.5 cars per minute. So that's relatively low traffic, and the sidewalk was, you know, empty for a number of periods of time on the video, or I gladly show that to you. So to me, it doesn't seem that we have a crisis with the traffic on the sidewalk, and that was including, you know, the bikes and people coming in cars. So I don't really understand at this point what prompted all this, that there was some, you know, major problem that's going to occur if we widen the sidewalk. Plus, I've also heard via some emails and discussions with Jeremy that the rules coming from this, whatever part of Florida that necessitated this, do not apply to Indian Harbor Beach. That's my understanding. And maybe I'm wrong in that understanding, but that's what I thought I heard. So I don't know why we have to, most things, if you want to change something, you can get grandfathered in with what you have, because you comply with the laws at that time when the road was built. And unless there's a major renovation, that you have to rip up all the sidewalks to, say, redo drain lines or water systems or whatever it is, you shouldn't have to be forced into complying with some new rule. And even if, and from what I understand, it doesn't apply, this law, whatever it is, doesn't apply directly to Indian Harbor Beach. So things that, you know, I would think the money could be used for, because I know you're in a financial bind here with canceling a contract, is like on Sioux, I see a number of children walking down the street, and there are no sidewalks on Sioux, coming into Yuma, going to school and going back. So some of the funds could be used to maybe work on Sioux.
Time's up. Sorry. All right. Thank you very much. All right. I will close the public comment portion of this and bring it back to council for discussion
Looking at option number two, where we would delay the project until after completion of the Osceola Drive Capacity Improvement Project, my mind is...
So let me make sure of this. So if that option were chosen, we're still having to forfeit that money to the contractor or not? I just want to make sure we're clear on this.
If you're, if Deputy Mayor Gert's concept is to do Osceola first, then come back and do Yuma, you don't have to forfeit anything. do Yuma, you don't have to forfeit anything.
So even with the TIF money?
Even, if it takes us another year to do Yuma, the county is fine with that.
All right. So only if we ultimately cancel, only if we only can, ultimately cancel the project, would we forfeit the money?
Correct. And the contractor stated that his concrete source typically increases prices in July and January. He said if there's a significant increase in January, he would approach us about that. Concrete is a component of his work. It's a very labor-intensive process too, so even if there is a rise in concrete, it's not, I don't think, a substantive change order next summer.
Okay. All right, councilmember Knott?
I'm in line with, starting on Osceola, I've already spoke, I've hand-delivered the notifications that were already mailed out to half of the residents on Osceola, and the consensus is they're okay with it, obviously because their easement that we're going to take is going to go towards the road and not towards the house, which is different from Yuma, obviously. I would like to see this in some type of meeting in the middle where we're able to, let me put it this way, if we were just going to replace what we already have, this is not an issue. If you're just replacing and making a new, the five-foot sidewalk that's already currently there, this is a non-issue because we're expanding it. And obviously, there are some concerns about the timing of it. So if we delay it going on to May, we've actually, we've accommodated that issue. Now, I know that you did a study of your own, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. What I am going to tell you is that the study really wasn't required for this because it is a main route for the school. That's how these streets were chosen, is because of the routes, is going to the school and to the parks. Those are the two roads, simple. So, and to accommodate that, we went with the project. But at the same time, the standards that you're referring to, the DOT standards, say, basically the standards say you have a five-foot sidewalk on each side, you meet the requirements where you don't have to have a bike path or a bike lane in the road, and you still have the 10 feet on each side for, is it 10 or 9, for vehicles?
So it's 10-foot lanes right now.
10-foot lanes.
But that's, that's with, without the bike.
Without the bike lane. But then, as it is currently right now, it's, the bike lanes doesn't meet standards, it's less than three feet. So, so in order to meet the other standard that the DOT puts in is that we do an eight-foot sidewalk on the one side, and that eliminates the bike path on the, on the street itself. So we do, we're able to do that. I think that we can come to a compromise where instead of the eight feet, we can do six feet. It's not taking that much of an easement, but let's keep this in mind. The easement is city property. I understand that there's benevolence here, but we have to understand, all right, it's also on your property connected to it, and it's aesthetics as well. I deal with that when it comes to what's going on in the park in my backyard, especially when I saw all the trees that were giving me shade get knocked down. But I know something's coming in the future. So I would be more in favor of delaying this till May and reducing it from the eight feet to six feet. Keep in mind that it's only a foot and that we would all, we would have, we were going to replace the five feet, and it would be a non-issue. You wouldn't be here, basically. You wouldn't be here. So that's my thoughts.
Okay. Just a couple of clarifications. The, it isn't an easement, it's a public road right-of-way.
Correct.
It's well within that.
Yes.
I don't want to confuse people.
No, you're right. I'm sorry.
Make it sound like it's on your property. It is not. It's within the city's right-of-way. And I won't give my full comments right now, but if we're going to go down to a six-foot wide sidewalk, I think we're going to sacrifice certainly some of the TIF money, if not all of it, because they may not consider that a capacity improvement project at that point. They may, but it won't be as much as an eight-foot sidewalk. So just something to consider. So it may involve more outlay by the city out of our general fund money to cover that cost, the cost of the project. It's potential for that. I don't know, I don't know numbers, nobody does right now.
I've had these meetings, and I think it would have been a, it's not, the contractor wouldn't use as much material, so basically there's been savings. We would have to return some of that money to the county, but nothing's coming out of our pockets, my understanding.
It would depend on the interpretation that the county gives for whether, how, how much it qualifies for TIF funds.
Correct.
I don't know the answer to that, I honestly don't. I don't know if it's eight foot's the magic number. That's not how this came about. I don't know, seven foot's the magic number, six? Does six give you any credit over a five-foot sidewalk? I don't know. I honestly have no idea on the answer. I'm just, I want to bring up things that people should consider.
Yeah, and the reason I, the magic number I came up with when it came to six is because you have three feet for pedestrian, three feet for bicycles. So that was my assumption, and I understand. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Omi?
When I first heard about this, I also was very much against it, but I'm on Yuma every single day, and it really just isn't adequate the way it is. I do think it would be an improvement to this city, and I really do get that this would be very frustrating to live on Yuma while this is happening. A few years ago, AT&amp;T installed something in our front yard, and I didn't have a front yard for six months, and it was terrible. But I have really good internet now, so it, you know, ultimately it was an improvement. It might, especially if we can get it done mostly over the summer, it would hopefully be less of a inconvenience. So I would also say number two, delay the project until after the completion of Osceola and then go forward. And David, I do want to just add, I appreciate where you're coming from with just going to six feet. It won't make a difference, it needs to go wider. It's really, it's very crowded in the morning and in the afternoons, it is a busy street. I understand he watched the Ring camera, but Wednesdays are actually club days, so there weren't, weren't a lot of kids at dismissal today. So, you know, I'm there every day for almost seven years now. It needs some improvement.
Councilmember Dyer?
I just want to thank everybody for coming and, you know, having your input. Definitely, we do listen to it, and, well, we don't take these decisions lightly, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a big yard guy as well. You know, if you strut by my house, you know, you can see that. But we have to make these decisions based off of all the residents for all the city, not just currently, but potentially for the next, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. So just, you know, that being said, I see the, the traffic coming from the school going north, and it's, it's a bike parade. It's a great problem to have, but it is a safety issue because obviously they're going to see people coming from another way, and then they're going to go on the road, and it's just, I think ultimately, I'm definitely sympathetic of the, of the loss to the yard, but I think the safety of the kids is more, more paramount and important. So I'm in favor of the eight-foot sidewalk and pivoting to the Osceola project and then in October, and then coming back to the Yuma, I believe, in March. Option two.
Okay.
May, yeah.
Okay, so I'm also in favor of option two, and I'm going to stick with the eight-foot wide sidewalk. We just had a workshop about e-bikes. We know that e-bikes are going to end up, some on the sidewalk, some on the road. It's going to be impossible to control that. So with that kind of added ingredient, you know, we didn't have these a few years back, now we have them. So it's just another user that's going to be on these sidewalks and just more congestion on the sidewalks potentially. So I think it's all the more important to, to consider that. You know, also, we can debate it all day long about whether DOT rules apply or not. I know they don't have jurisdiction over the road. In other words, they don't own it or maintain it, they're not responsible for the road. But the Florida Green Book is a publication by DOT. It is a guide that almost everybody uses that I know in my field, which is civil engineering, land development, transportation engineering. And, and it states it right in there for a multi-use, it defines multi-use paths used by multi, multiple modes of transportation, bicycles, pedestrians, you know, e-bikes in this case, that actually recommend 10 to 14 feet for a multi-use path. But it also has a provision in there for as little as an eight-foot path under certain, with certain constraints. So we don't have all the room in the world to build something like this, so, and I don't think that that's warranted for, certainly for Yuma Drive. But I'm just giving you my rationale, my reasoning for wanting to stick with an eight-foot sidewalk when the time comes. I am in favor of option two and pushing this project until later when it makes more sense and is easier to do. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to delay the project until after completion of the Osceola Drive capacity improvement project. Delay the Yuma project.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gertens, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next is public forum. Anybody wishes to speak from the audience, please come up, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak on any topic. We have a taker, maybe? Looks like Ms. Jimmian's going to come up and tell us something or ask us something.
Thank you. My name is Linda Jimmian at 204 Cynthia Lane, and I just want to thank the city council for your continued confidence in me and reappointing me as alternate to the planning and zoning board. Thank you so much. I look forward to serving.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gertens, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned.